We'll call meeting to order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westergaard.
Yep.
Waltman.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Us.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Before the due of the public forum, Gus, would you stand up a second?
Yeah.
Fire, just face the fire squad.
Yeah. We have this flag here, this may be your last meeting here, but we'd like to show you our appreciation for serving on the council.
Well, thank you.
And you gotta get your picture taken.
They give me this little bitty stunt.
We're not even got that. Yeah. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
And compliments to the mayor for wearing that shirt.
For a picture.
Yeah, where's your suit? Oh, that's good, though.
He goes. I almost changed. I thought, oh. I had to show the guy which switches to switch off to get the doors to work.
Okay, we have no public forum?
We do.
We do?
Gus wanted some time.
Oh. Gus, you want to say something?
Yeah. I didn't know I was gonna get to be first, but no, I still wanna put sewer in for my neighbor and me. Come to our property line. And it'll take, uh, the figure Scott gave me is it'll take eight, 10 years to pay for it, so. And, uh, the money coming in, it'll be like making 8% on the money you invest. Plus, it'll be a lot better environment for the water rather than going into, because we're close to a couple ponds, the water that goes into the lake. So I'd like to have that considered sometime in the fall. It was, this year was not a good year to do it because the water's too high. But some falls are, you know, when the water's down, why it'd be the ideal time to do that. And I got permission from the tile plant. And I've talked to the, uh, it's the League of Iowa Municipal, I can't even say it. Municipalities. And talked to a guy down there, and he says that he thought the cities were supposed to all run sewer to the property line. And I've got a number, he says, if they want to call me, I got his number. But this number's, all you councilmen should write it down in case you have any questions about legal, uh, anything legal that you do or wanna do for the city. And he agrees, you know, that, I mean, it's, in 10 years, it'll be, you have your money back.
What was that cost estimate on it?
Income.
I blush at all.
Was it 20,000?
I don't think, I didn't think it was that high.
What's that?
Didn't we have a cost estimate on that once?
Yeah, 8,000.
Yeah. I didn't think it was that, I thought it was, uh...
That's for both, you know, both ways?
Well, that was said.
One mine in and then you're gonna split.
Yeah, and then we'll dig, the neighbor and I will dig through that.
I guess we'll do some thinking on it, Gus, how's that?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so we can't act on it.
No, we can't act anyway, just so you know, we're looking at it.
Okay.
Okeydoke. Gonna work.
Reese.
I want that whole preacher thing going off. I actually wore a suit tonight so everybody would know I actually do own one. You know, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Jeremy Behrens, the newest member of the Lakeview Police Department. Jeremy's been with us since October 26th, and he comes to us from the Dennison Police Department, or he was there for eight years, then eight years with the Jefferson Police Department before that. So it's, uh, it brought to my attention, we've never actually introduced Jeremy to the council, so I'd like to take this opportunity, if it's okay. I'll start. This is Jerry Huss in Iowa, then Whitey Stein, Kenny Steinkamp, the answers to both, then the guy with the Iowa State Education, Mayor Westergaard, Dave Waltman, Gus Cleveland, Terry Reese, our city attorney, Aaron, and counselor-elect Tammy Mollers back there, if you'll raise your hand, Tammy. So this is Jeremy Behrens.
Very good.
Thank you, man. Welcome aboard.
The last time I saw you on the podium was during a play, and that was pretty good there.
And it looked pretty similar.
Pass the lecture plate.
There you go.
Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it. I'll skip it.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Huss?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, the hometown pride is up first, Tammy, you're gonna give us the information.
First, I'd like to let you know that we do have some of the committee here, Susan Hanson, Brett Muggenbergy, Larry Halsner, Lori Westergaard, and me, everybody up here. I think those are the ones that are here, okay? We are required to, due to the Iowa, Keep Iowa Beautiful guidelines, we're required to give you, present a plan for your endorsement. You should have some of this in your packet. Plan outlines what the committee feels are important projects and issues to be addressed in the Lakeview community. Through strategic planning session, as shown beginning on page five of the packet, each committee member provided their individual insight through an online survey as their views on the important projects to be considered for Lakeview. Rick Hunsacker of Region Wallop spearheaded the survey motion for the Hometown Pride Committee. A review of the committee's questions and answers were discussed, with each member being asked to list their preference for major and minor projects. All projects were listed with similar items to be combined. On page nine of your packet, you'll find the results of this committee's project survey. Project name and votes received for that project are in parentheses. The major projects listed were the event center, which received 11 votes. Speaker park improvements, splash pad in a sidewalk around that park, received nine votes. We would like to see, if we do this, the lead go to the City Park and the Pier 25 Committee on that. And then the tourism promotion received five votes, which the lead go to the Community Club and the SOTB. Minor projects include historical and informational kiosks with nine votes. We would hope that the HPC would take the lead on this for us. And that, and then the city flag and mascot received eight votes. In improving the appearance of the neighborhood with beautification tree placement received seven votes. Page 10 in the packet indicates these projects and initial, an initial doable timeline for completion is seen by the Hometown Pride Committee members. Projects range in completion to two to five years. On October 24th of this year, the overviews of the Hometown Pride program along with the committee results were presented to the celebrating Lakeview event. Surveys were given to all in attendance along with a website address for those wishing to participate in a later date. Pages 11 through 15 denote the results for the survey, both written and online from the 24th. As you can see on page 11, a total of 116 surveys were completed for the celebrating Lakeview event. Of these, 57 were written and 59 completed online. What a great testimonial to citizens' involvement for our community. We wish to thank everyone for participating in the survey with thanks. Special thanks to those who signed up on for helping hands in the future. Of the major items, promoting tourism is listed at 90.2% importance, followed by an event center at 85.2, and the speaker park enhancements at 76.1%. Minor items resulted in 85.7% rating, improving appearance of the neighborhoods as important, followed by important informational kiosks at 69.4, and identification of a city mascot at 36.9. Please bear in mind that this is simply a plan, a big picture. With these results and your endorsement, the Lakeview Hometown Committee can begin to work towards gathering cost estimates, work plans, and a well-defined timeline. Endorsement of this plan is for this plan only. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Tammy?
Yes, just, one, this is one minor comment, that surveys continued to roll in, and we had 11 more, so we were up to 127 surveys. No huge impact on the, on the results, but we did get a few more of them, and the survey's actually closed today, so that would be the final numbers.
What the Hometown Pride is looking for is a motion for the council to endorse the plan.
I'll make that motion.
You'll second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Huss?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tammy, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, we're gonna have the aquatic vegetation, Jim. You're getting to be a regular here.
Uh, man, a few words, my wife said she wishes so. I'm gonna pass this around to the audience here, but the council has a copy of this. You can look at the fixtures, you don't necessarily have to read the one page in there, because we'll be discussing that, but you just wanna pass it down. Can I probably go over here, 'cause I've got a few papers?
Yep, I'll be sure.
Let me talk about the lake vegetation and some, and some plans to maybe assist the veggie harvester in getting caught up a little better with that in the future. I should first reintroduce myself to the council and then to the guests. I'm Jim Millenacher. I, my wife and I moved here five years ago to retire. And I also live on the east side of the lake over there, and I'm a member of the Blackhawk Lake Protective Association, and also a current board member of the protective association. And also tonight, we've got two other protective association board members here, Don Durner, who's the president, and Sarah Thompson, who's the treasurer. And then Ben Wallace is here to answer any questions you all might have about this topic as we go through it also. But, uh, the, before I get into the proposal, and we talk about some dollars and that sort of thing too, I've been asked by some people, some local business people, and some protective association members, and some homeowners in the lake, to say a little bit about, uh, why this might be a good idea here. First, I'm here to discuss the current recreational condition of the lake, including the lake's importance to the, our Lakeview economy and also Sack County's economy. And second, I'd like to ask the city then to consider financially participating next year in a project utilizing aquatic herbicides to reduce the excess weed growth in the lake. This project is designed to augment and assist the efforts of the veggie harvester in controlling the weed growths. The funding of the project could be the same as for the current funding of the veggie harvester, as a shared expense possibly between the Blackhawk Lake Protective Association, the city of Lakeview, and Sack County. We've addressed this with the Blackhawk Lake Protective Association, and when we get a little further down, I'll give you some info on that. And now we're addressing it for the city council, and I've talked to one of the board supervisors, and we'll get an opportunity right after Thanksgiving to speak with them about this same topic. The funding of the harvester, as I said, would hopefully be, could be a shared project. As we're all aware, Blackhawk Lake is currently in a multiple-year lake restoration program sponsored by the DNR. And part of that restoration was the improvement in the water quality and the clarity, which we're thrilled with, but then, which also resulted in some increased aquatic plant growth. Some people call them weeds, Ben likes me to call them aquatic macrobaces. As a, uh, in 2014, the DNR provided the lake generously with a $250,000 veggie harvester anticipating the situation and to help us control excess weeds in the lake. Due to the late delivery of the harvester in 2014, the DNR then did use some aquatic herbicide on approximately 100-plus acres of the lake to help control the vegetation. After two years of operation, what we've seen is the veggie harvester efforts to clear the lake of excess weeds proved inadequate to clear enough for normal boating. Now, plans are currently being made, and you've all touched on this already a little bit among yourselves too, to improve the efficiency and the acres covered daily by that veggie harvester. But due to the limitations in the veggie harvester's daily maximum capacity compared to the total numbers of acres involved, the addition of aquatic herbicide, I think, is needed to attempt to control the vegetation. I first met with Ben on this topic back in October, and we were talking about, started out with the efficiency of the veggie harvester, what it's capable of, what it accomplished in the past. That led to a discussion about the possibility, and I asked him about adding aquatic herbicides again to the mix to help build the vegetation. This isn't just unique to Blackhawk Lake, after I looked into this quite a bit. Other Midwestern face the same problems. Ben could give you quite a bit of information about the whole Midwest and issues like this. I have a friend who lives on Lake Port Lanning, that's a lake on the northern edge of Omaha. He told me they've had to use aquatic herbicide every spring on their lake, or else it becomes just too choked with weeds and unusable for them. Then I went and had a meeting with a lake manager for Lake Port Lanning, and he suggested some companies that provide lake treatments, like we're talking about here. And then Ben had suggested the possibility of another name of somebody who does this kind of work also, a business that does this kind of work, that had done Potter Lake and some other areas. That led us to then having another meeting, bringing one of these company representatives around with Ben, and meeting to discuss the possibility of, again, putting aquatic herbicides in the mix to help control the vegetation. And if we did go forward with this, this would be, a program would be approved by the DNR's permitting process. It's like anybody who deals with herbicides anywhere in the state, it's a commercial application, especially with the state lake. Ben would tell them what they would have to, what hoops they would have to jump through, and what they would have to accomplish to make sure that everything was done in the proper fashion. Ben would also have control, when we get the chance to look at this a little closer, when we get a little mapping of where maybe this could be utilized, the DNR also has final approval on a, on a plan of that nature also. Now, before we discuss the cost of the program, which would be in addition to the veggie harvester operation cost, I wanna share some thoughts that I've been asked to share by local business people, lake homeowners, and camp owners about the current conditions of the lake, that we're looking to hopefully improve a little bit. And also about the importance of the lake to this local business community that they've told me about, and also the tremendous amount of tax dollars provided to the city and county by the vacation homes that we've got around Blackhawk Lake. And, and in other words, how lucky we are to have that lake out there to stimulate this local small-town economy. Now, the lake has been impaired for boating for the last couple of years due to the excess weed growth. Now, when I use the phrase excess weed growth, that is people, and that's me talking, not Mother Nature. We've had discussions about this with people, and with a clear-water lake, Mother Nature does what it does, and it would be happy to fill every foot of this lake with vegetation. It might end up looking like a giant weed-choked farm pond. That's Mother Nature, that, but what the people want, though, is to hold back Mother Nature just enough so we can use the lake for boating, as we always have. And in our discussions, we should, he'll make arrangements, and there'll always be plenty of room in that body of water for the aquatic vegetation, which is good for our system also. Now, those last two years, this is a bit painful to talk about, but I've been asked to talk about, the last two years have damaged the local economy. As I've said, we've lost the lake about two years for the normal boating that we've experienced in the past. The businesses, the lake homeowners, the campers, don't want us to use a third one, if there's anything we can do to help it out. Here are the types of businesses and some land values already starting to suffer. We have several examples that local businesses, they've shared with me, I'm not gonna put their names into this record, but they will talk to you if you ask them to. And we go down a little list here. We've got two great boat dealers in Lakeview, they're both very vocal about the problems of the lake affecting their business. I'm not gonna speak for them, you can ask them yourselves. Some Main Street businesses affected, there's a local gift shop that told me that their business has been down for two years now, and this was the kind of sad part, can they hang on for another? Again, you can ask that business. The bait shop is quoted in the Sioux City Journal as being down 80% due to the lake condition. Farmers market, participants, a couple of them have told me their business is down, fewer campers, you can, again, you can ask them. A Main Street wall lake business told me that they have less income because the lake vacation homeowners are not spending as much as they did in the past. Again, I can provide the name, you can ask them. Voters and camping, campers coming from Carroll have told me that they've stopped coming here because they just couldn't get out there and do what they've done in the past and what they wanna do. Real estate. A Carroll real estate agent that I know had a listing of my friend's cabin summer 2014. That, she called him one day and told him she had to take the sign down. She could not show his cabin while the weeds were thick in the lake, and they couldn't even vac his boat off the hoist at that time. You can ask that Realtor and that person if you'd like their names. A Lakeview Realtor told me that this summer, they had shown a developer from Omaha a lakefront building lot. That developer's plan would have possibly added over a million dollars in tax valuation for this city. That potential sale was lost because the developer said that he could not sell the project due to the bad condition of the lake at that time. Again, you can ask the neighbor, the owner of that property, who's a neighbor of mine, or you can ask the Realtor about these things. Lost, the, well, I've shared this with Ben and some other people too. You all heard about the car petition last year. And it turned out, it was a moot point, and, but the people circulating the car petition didn't know. We asked the people who circulated this petition, there was three participants in town that were circulating, we asked them to give copies so that we could just see the frustrated comments that they made. I'm not gonna use the names again, they're on here, but I'm not gonna use the names, but I'm just gonna point out several of them. Can't fish off our dock, can't boat on the lake without watching out for the weeds. My heart is broken over the condition of my child home, I can't share this with my family. We just put an expensive addition on our lake home for the future, and we're very concerned about our values. Visiting to swim and boat who are not able to, very disappointing. Great community, horrible lake experience. Unusable during the peak time of the year. What a mess. Do you want anybody coming to this community? Like I said, it's not very pleasant, but these were just reactions of the people this summer. I'm employed here in Lakeview and now depend on the lake. Please help get it fixed, thank you. It was great for fishing, but I couldn't get a boat out there. The lake is beautiful, it's a shame it's full of grass too much so that we can't swim and boat, what a waste. I bought a lake home so we could really enjoy this lake, but we can't get our boat out because the weeds plug it up. We haven't been able to boat normally for three years, oh my God. Possibly ruin the biggest recreation opportunity in our area. Let's try to fix it. I feel that the land values have gone down because of the problem. Property taxes need to be reduced, it's very disappointing. Very frustrating not to be able to use the lake we want, we wanted to. Your town is losing out on a lot of recreational income. I will not put my boat on the lift next year. You can't enjoy, in boat, you can't enjoy the boating without plugging up the motor. Lost vacation rentals, a specific example, there's a vacation home rental in Town Bay. The owner told me she had to cancel seven weeks of rentals this summer, that's $10,000 lost. She said the community lost the money because those vacationers would have spent money here. Again, you can ask her. Last area to consider is why this might be so important to us all, it's a tremendous tax base the lake provides for the city and county. I think this will help us as local taxpayers, all the local taxpayers, to understand why might, they might think it'd be a good idea to jump in and maybe help with a program like this also. There's over 350 homes on the lakeshore, all at docks and boats in front of them, and then there're almost, there's almost as many lake homes as there are homes in town here. Two-thirds of those homes are summer vacation homes. Of the remaining one-third, many are previous vacation homes, like mine, where the owners have chosen to move here and retire here. Four of my neighbors have chosen to retire here because of the lake. We've got neighbors just in our area from Dennison, Harlan, Carroll, Idigrove, Manning, Algonah, Omaha, and Sioux City. They're only here because they want to use and enjoy the lake, of course. The taxes these properties put into our community is tremendous asset to the city and to Sack County. Those homeowners wanna be here because the lake and the taxes on those properties are reflected, those values are higher on lakeshore properties. They range from $3,000 a year to $6,000 a year, and even up to $13,000 per year on home. What a tremendous asset to the city and county because of those homes. The assessed tax value, taxable valuations in Sack County, it's just amazing what an asset this is to our small community here. I just mentioned three of them, the smallest tax base valuations in Sack County, the smallest town is Nima, $3 million some dollars. The biggest town in the county, Sack City, provides $48 million-plus dollars in tax valuation. That's the biggest town. Quite a bit smaller town, Lakeview, provides $62 million in tax valuations to the city and the county. What a, you know, it's just like a tremendous economic engine out there. Then, what we should do now, if you'd like to, well, before we actually get into the prices, I'd like to tell you where the Blackhawk Lake Protective Association, from the minutes, that Sarah sent out recently. Where we're at with this project, studying it, thinking about going forward with it, is, we discussed it at the last meeting, and we discussed that the cost of the chemical treatment, these are from the minutes, could be shared with the city of Lakeview, Sack County. You mentioned the chemical, that's not necessary to talk about right now, but Neil Steinkamp moved that the VLPA board support limited chemical treatment of vegetation in conjunction with the city of Lakeview at an amount to be determined after hard numbers are present. After the hard numbers of the project are available. Sarah seconded the motion, the motion passed. That's where the VLPA is at, didn't have the hard figures yet at that point. Then, before we even hit to those, Ben's latest email to the, to the VLPA board members helping on this project is, well, you open that up now and look at some prices in there, there's a couple of ways to go at this, it just has to do with how much, how much you wanna tackle. Lake Port Lanning out in Omaha, they tackle quite a bit. What we need to do here is kind of get a, something going to augment the efforts of the veggie harvester to kind of get the, the lake back. And when we, the veggie harvester people tell me that machine is not efficient when you run it by shorelines in shallow waters and rocks. It's like a farmer doing his field, it takes a lot longer to do the perimeter and getting that right than mowing the harvest in the center of the field. If we do some, use this process on the lake perimeter, the veggie harvester, I think it was damaged even at the end of the season. There's less chance of that, and when we get it out there, the people running it could tell me it could be more efficient if it runs out in the lake and stays away from the shorelines. So this proposed project at this point, and the mapping that we laid out, would maybe to use some aquatic herbicides along some shorelines to supplement and augment the veggie harvester. Ben's note said, "Thanks for the update, I am more comfortable with the first option of treating 62 and a half acres. This will be our first year taking this approach, and I prefer to start small and see how things go." Now, if you got, I'll just kind of get out of the way unless you've got, I can stand quietly, as you have your discussion, you might have some questions for other people, and that's up to you also. Going forward, goal would be hopefully that the city then could consider bringing a mid-budget for next summer, a little bit of money along this project also.
Can you just talk through the map real quick, Jim?
Yes, the map, uh... Yes, the map, let's see if I can get, well, I've got some information on the companies that were looking at us for this, and we may get bids on to. The map, some of you have seen it go by out there. What was done, keep the veggie harvester away from shorelines and keep it more efficient out there. We drew some lines around the lake. Now, this is not exactly, it's not to scale, and this will be all subject to the D N R's approval. So far in the discussions, this kind of made sense. And then just, how much do you do? And then if you, if you take a strip and, we leave a lot of areas for vegetation and where you don't even have to run the veggie harvester, that'll begin, will be up to the D N R, run the veggie harvester or use aquatic herbicide so that the lake keeps a healthy environment for all the critters in there. Then by drawing that, we were thinking, would you consider a hundred and fifty-foot wide strip along those areas? And if you look at this map, it's mostly drawn in front of where the lake homes are at. It's not drawn in front of Cottonwood Point or any areas that might be more critical for fish habitat. Ben could address that more if you want him to. But that, then the option, the other option might have been to you to take a three-hundred foot wide strip in those areas. Doubles the cost. Ben's suggestion at this point was to, more comfortable with the option of doing sixty-two and a half acres. So you might take that into consideration as you discuss it. And I've said about the map.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jim?
Is this a spray? Does it, do they spray it on or?
The way they apply this, these companies that do that, it'd be similar to what Ben did in, in a couple of years ago. They've, they've got a John boat. This is a professional outfit with some lines that stick down into the water. They mix up this herbicide, which is considerably less expensive, just like farming. If you buy it by a tote of two-hundred and fifty gallons versus the gallon price, giving an example, by the gallon for these aquatic herbicides. And they are weed-specific, Ben has told us, and then talked with these companies, specific to the weeds that we want to deal with in this lake versus maybe Carter Lake or somewhere else. Sixty bucks a gallon by the tote, by the two-hundred and fifty gallon quantity, the big plastic thing. It's available in, right over in Wall Lake. It's eighty, could be up to eighty-seven dollars per gallon brought in the smaller two-and-a-half gallon containers. The way they apply it is they drive a boat with this, I'll call it like a boom, like you'd see off a tractor, but the, the wires or the feed goes down into the water. Correct me if I say anything incorrect on this, Ben, but then the, the material they put in, once it's mixed, it's a little bit heavier water. It's a contact herbicide. We have to do this as they do in Lakeport Landing or other areas where they do it. You want to do it early in the season because you want to catch these weeds. It's contact, so they've got to be up. But you want to catch them when they're small, much more efficient and less herbicide needed than if they get to the surface of the lake, whereas you know they grew last summer. And once you kill them off at that point, then you've got a bigger die-off in other issues that could come along with a greater algae bloom and just cause other issues for us. But that's kind of how it's done. It's done with a boat. The company that, the first price we got on there, they said their company would actually accomplish this within a day or a day and a half. They'll, they'll have this big tote of herbicide on the shoreline somewhere, they'll go back and forth, they'll load. Their equipment can move fairly quickly through the water. And then they were doing, this is an average depth, Ben determined of about four, four-and-a-half foot in the areas we're talking about on the shorelines, so it doesn't take as much herbicide as if you did a deeper area in, in any body of water. They would scoot along the shorelines in, in that area, using up the amount that we've decided maybe to add to this program and be done fairly quickly. They've said it'll be good for the season. They have also said that as long as the, the water, you know, we've got clarity and everything going good for us, that this would be an annual project in the future when we have a lake dredge, the environment can change with deeper water. And Ben could address that, but with the deeper water, these weeds need sunlight. We didn't have sunlight in that water, as you know, a couple of years ago, before they worked on cleaning this up for us. We didn't have sunlight there. I grew, I've been on this lake for sixty-five years, and I've boated for fifty of those years, and you, and you didn't open your eyes in this lake, we all knew that. By cleaning it up and working tremendously on the watershed, the things they've done, hundreds of thousands of dollars, ongoing projects, we've got a lot better situation. But until that dredge project possibly in the future, as long as we have this water quality, this, we might need on-go with this, just like we'd have to on-go with the veggie harvester. And that's what they've had to do with the lake in Omaha that I've studied.
Jim, when you're talking about this cost, you're talking about nineteen thousand just for the chemicals, right?
No, that is applied.
That is applied, though?
Thank you. That is, and, and you gave me a hard time about putting plus tax in there because obviously these are not taxable organizations that might be funding this, so I apologize for that. The guy just mentioned that, so we take that off the table. Yes, that's a cost applied.
Okay.
And there could be a amount in between there, but if that, that lower price there, the two-hundred and fifty gallons, which will do about sixty-two acres, which is approximately maybe covering the shorelines we talked about. We would like to also, if there's enough, because the D N R had hit the boat ramps and a few, and spot treated a few areas last summer with aquatic herbicide, we'll make this, that part of that same project, if we have enough to work with, we would hit those boat ramps and we'll hit the beaches. And I would even love to see enough so we could hit Sac Beach a little bit too, because in the past, so many people enjoyed that. And obviously, the line you saw goes into Town Bay by the beach, by the boat ramp, by the campground there, but it doesn't go to the other side along anywhere on the north of the other shoreline of Town Bay or by Ice House Point. Not needed there. Weeds are needed there.
Fish there though.
Fish are there, and if the weeds are heavy enough, it can, it can be problematic trying to fish in, in that spot. Between the veggie harvester and some control, you know, and you see these people out there with the nice fishing boats, if, if they can get out there and get where they want to go, they'll, they'll find their spots.
How much should we spend? What was our part of the cost last year?
Total project was twenty thousand, and ours ended up being, must have been around seven or eight. Is there going to be a targeted mailing list to the lake or the homeowners around the lake if they want to donate or?
There could certainly be private funding thrown into this, there could certainly be a fundraiser thrown into this. Some of us have discussed it. The people around the lake are the ones that primarily that are interested in joining the Black Hawk Lake Protective Association. That makes sense, right? They're very concerned about it, and they've got lots of money, and they, they love that lake. They are, are right now contributing to Black Hawk Lake Protective Association. They're contributing a quite a bit higher percentage of taxes on the same size home, on the same size lot than a home in town or in Sac City would pay. They're paying more because of the valuations there. So they're already throwing, I think, more into the, into the pot. Yes, we could ask them for some more, and, and some people have told me they'll write a check. But by the same token, we have to, just as we were told to come to the city council in, in advance, prepare for this because budgeting comes up the first part of the year. Sac County the same way. Budgeting comes up for the county the first part of the year, takes effect July one. We can't wait till July one for the veggie harvests to start working. We can't wait for possibly helping with this program because that's too late. So if a company would come out and help us in May and June, the water temperature has to be a certain temperature and, and some other conditions before it's effective and the weeds up a little bit. If they'd come out, we need to let them know well in advance, yes, between whatever entities are going to pay for this, we've got the money. Not that we're off looking for a fundraiser, because they have to plan their spring and summer work. It's pretty intense planning they have to do, just like a farmer does, to get done what they have to and they say they're going to do it. We want them here when these weeds are a certain size. We want them here when the water temperature gets over fifty degrees, and we want them here promptly then. So we need the funding really kind of designated, and then if we can go get some private funding and some donations, great. That means we all, maybe as taxpayers, have to throw in less. Like I said before, a lot of the taxpayers out there on the lakeshore, whether they're from Omaha or Carroll or wherever they're from that bought those homes, they're paying quite a bit toward the city and county right now, just because of the valuations.
Can I make a few comments on this? Kind of tell you the D N R's perspective or stance on this?
Get this on record, that's what I'm interested in.
So, why we're not looking at funding something like this from the lake restoration standpoint? The lake restoration program has specific directives, and it's water quality improvement. And treating vegetation with chemical is counterproductive to water quality improvement. And, but we do recognize that, you know, people want access and they want recreation out on the lake. And so, you know, we're willing to work with the local community on allowing that to happen, again, in a way to minimize the impacts, the negative impacts to water quality. There's three major risks that I think about, you know, when we talk about herbicide treatments. First of all, when you kill off vegetation, it decomposes. And as it decomposes, it consumes oxygen. That creates an oxygen debt which can kill fish. And we've seen that happen on a number of occasions. We had two major fish kills in Northwest Iowa this year from natural decomposition of vegetation. The other thing that it can do is as that vegetation decomposes, it releases nutrients, nitrogen, phosphorus, and that drives algae blooms. Unfortunately, at Black Hawk Lake, we have a long history of cyanobacteria, also known as blue-green algae blooms. These are the blooms that produce toxins, which are, are toxic to humans and to pets. And then third is invasive species. In the main lake basin here, we found all what appears to be native species. These are all plants that were grown here long before humans settled the area and, and established communities around here. There are invasive plant species out there. As you clear out native species, you make way for other plants to grow. So we, just like you would in a garden or in a field, there's shade and light competition between plants, just like we have out in the water. So if you, if you have native plants, then you reduce the risk of getting invasive plants established. So those are things to think about. And I'm not saying those are things that, that absolutely take vegetation management off the table, but they're things that we should be, consider and we should be aware of. Why, I'm open to Jim's plan. You know, when he first came to me, it was a circuit around the lake. And the thing I like about that is, one, it spreads out the chemical treatment rather than doing it all in one big chunk. You know, a couple of years ago, we tried doing it on our own in a big chunk, and we had, for one, we had weather delays, we didn't have the equipment that allowed us to apply a lot of chemical at once. But we also had to spread it out. When we do chemical treatments, we spread it out to spread out that decomposition so that we're not creating an oxygen debt out in the lake. And so by creating this path around the lake, you spread out that treatment zone so you don't have a huge area that's getting devoid of oxygen. Fish have an opportunity to escape that a lot better. The other thing it does is with only treating sixty-two and a half acres, let's just use that for example, I think we do get the most impact as far as recreational access with that minimal amount of spraying. We heard a lot of comments this year that it seems to be one of the most popular things to do in the lake is to cruise around the lake and kind of look at the homes as you go along the shoreline. And this would allow you to do that, and it would also allow you to access the restaurant, the boat ramps, the fuel dock, some pretty important amenities that are out there. So I, I was open to that. The reason why, you know, I said, you know, let's not do these areas along Shotgun Hill or Cottonwood Point or along Ice House Point there is, those are the undeveloped areas. So it's pretty easy to say we could save some money here and put our efforts somewhere else. Now, why I'm of favor of the sixty-two and a half acres as opposed to the one doubling that, is I believe your plan at sixty-two and a half acres, it'd be a hundred and fifty foot wide strip in that circuit that he showed you or drew on the map. If you double the width of that, you have to look at what you gain for that cost. And when you're talking about the proximity to shore and the depth that you're in, that's not an area where boats are going to be traveling wake speed. So at a hundred and fifty foot wide strip, boats have plenty of room to, to pass each other as they go around the lake. You double the width of that, you still haven't created an area where people can tube and ski and, and run at high speeds off the ends of docks and stuff. And so if you've achieved your goals with sixty-two and a half acres and that cost, if you're not really gaining anything by doubling it, then let's start small, see how this year goes and, and go with that smaller area. So, again, that's, that's where our stance is. We don't, vegetation management or getting rid of vegetation is, water quality is our main goal here, improvement of water quality. And vegetation helps us maintain water quality. But like I said, we, we recognize that it does impede recreation. And so we're willing to work with you on that, but the lake restoration program, they got to set guidelines that they got to follow. That's an appropriation from the, the House and the Senate. And they have to meet those, those directives in order to continue receiving funding, and all those directives are towards improving water quality. A comment about the economics, I, I'm not an economist, but I can say, I was here in ninety-nine when this lake looked like it had paint over the top of it and it died out, and the, the entire lake was ringed with dead fish for several weeks during the summer. That was all from an algae bloom. In these natural lake systems in Northwest Iowa, we're highly eutropic. These lakes are hyper-eutropic. We have a lot of nutrients. You either see vegetation or you see algae. Something's going to grow. And as we get rid of the algae, as we minimize that window of when it occurs, you're going to start to clear up the water, and you're going to see these plants come on. We have to get rid of this mindset of we got to get rid of all the vegetation, because it's going to put us right back to where we started. And I get more calls, I truly do get more calls about the cyanobacteria advisories that we have on the beaches than I do about vegetation. So one of the toxins that cyanobacteria produces, it's a hepatotoxin, so it affects the liver. I actually had a woman call me this year who had a history of liver disease, and she was concerned about coming to this lake. And I, I told her, if, if this is truly the case, you know, if you have liver problems, I would avoid this. I'm not a toxicologist, I'm not going to tell you what to do and what not to do, but it sounds to me like, you know, this, this isn't a good situation for you. The same people that have called about the vegetation and complained about that are the same ones that have called about the cyanobacteria. And it's not that I don't want to give it to you, it's physically impossible to give you a situation where you don't have both or one or the other. And so I, I just want to say that that is our big concern on large-scale chemical treatments and driving those types of algae blooms. Because it, it's one thing to, because you could use this entire part of the lake, the most part, last year. Fourth of July, I saw seventy-five plus boats in Town Bay enjoying the concert. What will keep people away, I believe more than the vegetation, is, all we've had to do is post advisories right now at our beaches. But there could become a point where we have to close our beaches, where we're required by law to close them. And so, and that happened at Saylorville this year. And so I just want you to think about that, and I want you to understand why the D N R is looking at this from a point of, we don't want to invest a lot of dollars into driving situations like that. Like I said, we're willing to, to work on these, these targeted areas that we think can provide the most public benefit with the least amount of negative impact to the water quality.
Ben, while we got here, you, could you share with the group kind of, the future restoration program, the goals of the water quality that would eventually reduce?
Well, yeah.
Even the algae blooms over, over time?
So the best long-term management for algae blooms and aquatic vegetation is nutrient management, and it's working in the watershed. And I got to say, our, in our watershed at Black Hawk Lake, it's been very impressive the amount of participation that we've had. It's been great, it's, it's unlike any project I've seen in Northwest Iowa, the amount of people participating, which is great to see, but we have a very large watershed, we have a fourteen-to-one watershed to lake ratio. So for every acre of water we have out there, we have fourteen acres of land to drain into it. A place like Clear Lake is more like two-to-one. Okay, so we're, we're on a magnitude, you know, I mean, we're, we're much bigger, which means we have a lot more nutrients and soil to deal with, but I think we're making a lot of headway in the short amount of time. That's the best long-term solution, but that takes a lot of time and, and that can't be done overnight. Another way that you can control where vegetation grows is manipulating depth, and that can be done through dredging. Dredging is very expensive, arguably the most expensive part of any kind of effort. What people need to know is that dredging alone will not solve your problems. You can talk to the community of Emmisburg. They've been dredging for the last fifteen or twenty years. They've taken out over six and a half million cubic yards, and their water quality continues to decline. So dredging alone will not solve your issue. And it can be a part of this project where we work in the watershed, the city's doing great stuff, doing urban conservation practices. So it's all of these things that we put together. Now, we are looking at, at dredging in the future. How much we will be able to do is going to be determined on the cost and the money available. But I can tell you, it will, you know, right now, if But I can tell you, it will, right now, some of our past dredging efforts have run us around eight to eight-and-a-half dollars a cubic yard. So you want to take out a million yards, there's eight-and-a-half million dollars right there. And I would love, to take this lake down to an average depth of ten feet, we'd take five million yards. Now, that's a lofty goal, and I'm not saying we can do that in our first go-around, but that's something that I look at towards the future. Maybe towards the end of my career, we could be approaching that, but, you know, in our first dredging effort, you know, I'd like to see us go for several million yards. That being said, we have to find a spoil site. That is the hardest part of dredging effort, is finding land to put this material. And we're working on that. Again, it takes time. This winter, we're looking at doing an archaeological survey out of the main lake basin, so that we can get our permitting stuff out of the way. Permitting takes a long time, we got to go through it like everybody else does. So if we can at least get our permitting stuff out of the way, then we can be ready to act when the opportunity is there. So that is one way that you can control vegetation by deepening it.
And say a few words about what you're doing with the inlet bay?
Yeah, the inlet, we are going to be dredging here in the inlet bay. We're going to be taking out about four-hundred-thousand yards of material out of the bay. And we should see a significant reduction in phosphorus delivery to the main lake. Because basically, this inlet area has filled to the point where it just passes everything on. Water doesn't stay in there long enough to drop out sediment, for nutrients to be taken up. Now, the amount of vegetation that's growing out there in response to the drought has certainly increased the residence time of that water and has helped us. But we are looking at deepening these basins here and creating a more bassinuous channel to force the water to stay in this area longer before it gets delivered to the lake.
You're going to do the whole inlet?
Well, we won't dredge up next to shore, we never dredge right up next to shore, but we'll be targeting the soft sediments out in the, if you want to break it up into like three lobes. Our plan right now that we're looking at is dredging here, 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 and then a channel, so that water will kind of follow the path of least resistance and kind of snake through here, rather than...
Will there be a deep hole they talked about?
Yeah, I mean, we could potentially go down to six feet or so, depending on...
Any deeper than that?
Well, so four-hundred-thousand yards, we can't go more than that, because our spoil site won't hold it. So what does, you know, spread over a hundred acres, and then you got, you know, say, an average depth of five feet, well, there's five-hundred-acre feet, and what does that equate to in cubic yards? I'm not going to do the math for you. So, I mean, you may be limited by just the quantity that you can move.
I just wanted to know, I just thought maybe that's going to make one big hole, just for the fish to...
Well, what's going to limit you there, too, is bottom sediment. At some point, you go too deep, you're going to start hitting glacial till and rock and sand and gravel. And what we like to do is remove sediment down to what we would call the parent material or what the glacier actually carved out. We don't like to go below what the lake originally was. And so, that's a project, well, hopefully, they're cleaning up the old spoil site right now, and we're going to hopefully have a dredge out there next year. Coming out here, this, we're talking about a lot larger quantities. And so, yes, if we can get this dredged, it will help limit where vegetation grows. But people should also be aware that we won't be dredging right up to people's homes. I mean, you don't want to, for one, get in that hard bottom, that sandy bottom around the perimeter of the lake for the most part. But you start taking material away from the shoreline, and the shoreline wants to move, and houses may want to move with it, and then people really won't be happy. So, but my point is, is whatever the outcome is, you still, at some point, as a community, as people that are concerned about their lake, we still need to be accepting a vegetation on some level. Because vegetation will always want to grow in the nearshore areas, exactly where it should grow, in what we call the photic zone or the littoral zone, where lake can penetrate. I would like to see a day where, you know, we have open water throughout the middle of the lake, and that you do have a band of vegetation around the perimeter, growing where it should. Because if the vegetation's there, it means that you have clear water. And that vegetation also helps to take up nutrients. It improves water quality in a multitude of ways, and I can talk for hours about it. But if it's not there, that means you've probably reverted back to a very turbid water environment. And so, right now, we're not at a point where we want to clear-cut this entire area and drive this water back to a turbid water state from April through October, like it used to be. We still get blue-green algae blooms, no doubt about it, but we don't see them until, you know, the beginning of July through August. So we've definitely shortened the time span of when we experience those.
Grass will probably grow a lot more next year than it did this year, though, once it's on it.
All every...
If we get, say, a foot less water, because, I mean, it's thrown over the outlet now.
Yeah, but at the time the growing season started, we weren't as high as we are now. So if, in May, the water clarity is ten feet, and a plant can grow, and then that plant maybe gets up to four feet below the surface, but now the water clarity is only five feet, that plant is still getting light, so it can kind of chase the water levels up. This lake, along with all, many, many other lakes in northwest Iowa and southwest Minnesota, saw an explosion of vegetation like they'd never seen before. We, there were some lakes in Minnesota that were topped out over a thousand acres, but they never had any vegetation in. And a lot of these lakes had cart, some didn't, some they've done work on, some they haven't. So Mother Nature has a lot to do with this. It's interesting, I just talked with my cousin, who's a biologist up in Alaska last week, and they had a lake out there explode with vegetation, so much so that they couldn't land float planes on it. And it had never had vegetation in it before. So it's been a very odd year. And what we think drove a lot of it was a lack of snow that we had. We didn't have a lot of snowmelt in the spring, that would kind of drive a small algae bloom and kind of get the water a little turbid to decrease that light penetration. We had very little runoff in the spring, and the water cleared up very fast, and it stayed clear for a long time. Algae blooms aren't necessarily a bad thing, but when they're blue-green algae, they are. There's green algae. Okay, green algae's, again, a native algae species, it's fine for a system, it's not toxic in any way. But we just have a tendency to get a lot of blue-green algae in this lake and a lot of our other lakes, because they take advantage of the conditions that are present in this area. They can fix their own nitrogen, so that's all they need is phosphorus, and they'll get going. So, that's kind of maybe a long, roundabout explanation of where we're going, where we want to go, and why, I'm comfortable with the proposal that Jim has set forth, but I'm also hesitant to just go more. I think the important thing when it comes to vegetation management is you pick out your goals. And if our goal was to create a cruising lane around the lake, and we can achieve that with nineteen thousand dollars and sixty-two and a half acres, let's stick with that. To just start treating more willy-nilly, just because we can, we got an extra thousand dollars, let's do a little spot out here, you have to look at what you've gained there. Is somebody going to go out and find that spot and just boat around in there? I don't think so. But I do think that the path around the lake shows a clear goal of allowing people to cruise around the lake. It will make it easier for dock owners to get their boats out and get out to the open part of the lake, which kind of starts about right here, going on west. And so, that's kind of my take on it. I have been working with Jim. We will require anybody to, that applies chemical on a sovereign lake to get a sovereign lands construction permit. That's part of the law. In that permit, what I want to see is their posting requirements or what they're going to do for posting, because some of this chemical has a withdrawal restriction on, I know for sure for cattle watering, I got to look at endothel, but it may be for swimming per day. And so, they have to, they're going to be responsible for notifying the public that they're going to do this chemical treatment and posting any signs or press releases.
I didn't see your signs that first year, you put it in a hundred acres, I didn't see your sign.
Yeah, Dykwatt doesn't have a withdrawal...
It depends upon the chemical.
It depends on the chemical. Dykwatt doesn't have a swimming withdrawal. It has a withdrawal period for cattle, but the lake wasn't running out, so it wasn't an issue at the time. Endothel has some other restrictions that we'll just have to look at and we'll be able to address. I'm not certain on Endothel's withdrawal periods, but they're going to have to look at the label and address any of those. The other thing that we're going to want to see is a plan on how to avoid any oxygen sags out there. And what that's basically going to be is their timing of the application. As Jim mentioned, you want to hit this vegetation when it's, everything that is going to germinate has germinated, but it's not to the surface, so that you're killing off a lot less biomass out there. And that's going to be a timing thing, usually in the beginning of June sometime. And then, we're also going to want to see a plan for minimizing the risk of aquatic invasive species. They're going to be bringing equipment from somewhere else. We don't know where that equipment has been, we don't know what kind of water it's been, if they have zebra mussels in their bilge, if they have any other plant particles attached to their boat. So we're going to want to see a plan on how they're going to disinfect their equipment before they come into our waters and use our equipment. So those are the things that, that part of the permitting process covers, making sure that everything's on the up and up, that they're following the same precautions that we would if we were doing the application.
Are they going to be putting us in when the docks are in the water?
Well, most likely, just based on the timing of it. I mean, people get their docks in...
How will they spray around the docks, or...
Guys, the company that we spoke to said they, they're familiar with that situation, sometimes the docks are in, they just deal with that.
It'd be more of a swath, parallel to shore, and not going in and out between the docks is pretty inefficient. And, well, to be honest, between the ends of the docks and shores where the vegetation, you know, should be, I mean, people aren't running their boats right up to their shoreline for the most part, their docks are kind of, or their lifts are out towards the end of the docks.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Fred. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Do you guys want to, have any questions for anybody else, if you have some sort of support, I would think? It's important, we need something to, so we can keep going on.
Well, I think as everybody here, I'm talking about the council, we realize how important the lake is to this community, whether you're in town or around the lake. And I think it's important that, I'm comfortable with Ben, we've got a plan now that, I assume has been re-supported by the DNR, that this...
As long as we see the things we want to see in the permit application.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to say yes before they, you know, apply for a permit.
So it's all going to start with money, so, and it's going to take, oh, well, probably another twenty, twenty thousand for sure, for us to come between, coming up with the right cash. I think it's important that we show as a council and as the city that we're taking a lead into this part of it, so. One of the things that Scott, we set aside, what, ten thousand dollars for tree, for the disease?
We did, there's ten thousand in trees.
Well, I'm just saying, we've got that money on hand right now, and I know we're kicking the can down the road on that problem, that's going to come to us at some point in time. But I would, I would like to see us put a minimum of, plus what our original commitment is, plus an original add at least another ten thousand dollars to that. In saying that, then I think it's important that the entities get together, and we talk to SAC County, make a formal presentation to them, to be clear about it, I'm on the board of the Black Hawk Protection Association, so I'll make, I can't make any statement on, but if they see what we can do, what SAC can do, and I'm sure that they'll put some money towards it, too, that we could reach our goal without, how do I want to say, creating the big influence. Again, I go back to the trees, that's a problem that's going to come, but it's not here yet, but we'll deal with it when it comes. We've got a problem now that needs to be solved, and I think it's important as a council that we head in that direction.
So you're talking, using that ten thousand dollars we set aside for that...
Right, that's money we got set aside right away without the fact that we're, and this is, the thing we're going to have to do about this whole situation, it's called about the education, we're going to have to get it out to the public early, so people know that we are trying to make some sort of effort to help the lake become more accessible for boaters or whatever. So that's important that we address that with the supervisors association, so in January one, that we could come and put this all, this plan together, and then at budget time, then we got to take a look at...
The next year.
The next year. Is that, I mean, I'm looking for you guys' appointment, that's just my opinion right now, so it's...
Well, it's a problem that's not going to go away, and we need to take a proactive approach to it, and do something now, rather than just sit on our butt and do nothing.
Is there any kind of grants or anything out there?
It'd be tough for this. It's, you know, it's just a one-time shot, you're using it, and then it's done, and you have to redo it again the next year. There's, kind of on our own on this one.
Yeah, we could have fundraiser.
Well, we could do that also, but, you know, the thing is, the money has to come up before budget time and stuff, and I think that using those funds that we already have for that project, would be a pretty sound idea.
Well, it also shows that we're taking a, you know, we're kind of funding half of this.
Right.
We're taking it very serious as a city. We'd hope that everybody else would take it, you know, that they could step up and help out.
Because, you know, I think the water project as a whole is a great thing, and we just need to find a balance between that and the recreation part. And if we could do this without damaging the other part, you know, just doing the sixty-two acres like Ben said, and using the ten thousand dollars that we already have set aside, economically would be, it'd be helping quite a bit, I think.
It gives us a chance at budget time to discuss what we, you know, what direction we want to go to. And again, like I said, it's just like every other year, you know, is this going to clear up? Believe it or not, we're learned as we're going to, and that's a pretty safe assumption. We know we can do something that, like Ben says, we go backwards at. So we take our baby steps, do our education with the public, let them know that we're going to make an effort, strong effort to make this a boating recreation again, so...
More investment.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I was kind of leaning towards the three-hundred foot, until you wanted, said, you know, you want to see, I don't want to kill all the fish off.
Yeah, well, I just think it's, you know, a hundred-and-fifty-foot wide versus three-hundred is, have you gained that much more by doing that extra width? You know, I think boaters can still do what they want to do with a hundred-and-fifty-foot, and by just doubling that width...
Well, I was thinking, three-hundred foot in that water, you got to stay out...
Three-hundred foot from shore can make a wake.
Five mile an hour.
I mean, this is a way to do it without, you know, see what happens with this, you know, and...
No, we haven't worked with any of these companies before, you know, don't know how they are. We can see how this goes, we can see how the lake responds to a treatment of this nature, just because we haven't done one like this before. We're, we've been talking a lot with the folks from Minnesota, up in Minnesota on their natural lakes, the homeowners are entirely responsible for vegetation management. They do allow them to treat fifteen percent of the lake area with chemical, and then up to fifty percent with mechanical means of removal. And surprisingly enough, they don't even entertain the idea of dredging. But what we're looking at here, that sixty-two and a half acre, that's about eight percent of the lake. And so, I think it's not a huge amount, where I'd like to see, you know, this done and see how this lake responds to it. No doubt, weather's going to be a factor, and it's pretty tough to parse out what drives what.
I was just thinking, if you don't get the rain like we did this year, which is more than likely, we had rain once a week, or...
It is entirely possible that you don't see veg grow out there next year. You know, and, I mean, it is, as crazy as it sounds, but it all has to do with clarity of the water. And if we get hard rains in the spring and things stay turbid for a while, you may not see it come on, or you may not see it come on as bad. And so much of this is Mother Nature. People give me a lot of credit for causing it all to happen, but, but Mother Nature has a lot to do with it. And when you think about it, all we did was take out fish that never belonged there to begin with. And the lake sort of wanted to do what it always used to do before we started messing with it. But again, these things, they can be very year-to-year. And so, that's why I think, you know, sixty-two and a half acres, let's, you know, I'm open to trying that, see how it goes. If we decide that a hundred-and-fifty-foot just isn't wide enough, then maybe we can look into, you know, next year, expanding that. But we're talking about a lot of money here for an annual thing, and so, that's one thing...
I was thinking, with less water, machine out there is going to be really busy, you can, don't have to go through as much water to get the plants going.
Yeah, I think that thing's going to be busy either way, if there's veg growing out there.
I think that's always ideal, what you said, you know, try it this year.
My other question we have, you said there's different companies that are able to do this?
Yeah, so you basically got to have a category five commercial pesticide applicator's license, and that endorses you to use a chemical that's a restricted-use chemical for aquatic environments. Not only is it a state law, but it's on the label. And the label is the law when it comes to restricted-use pesticides. label. And the label is the law when it comes to restricted-use pesticides, so they gotta have one of those. And, um, that's what we wanna see, that they're a licensed applicator, and that whatever they're, you know, when they apply for a permit, that they're meeting all of our concerns and addressing those, and then we'll make, choose to issue that permit.
So, I guess where I'm going with this is, the different entities that are involved in this, who's gonna make the determination, what company we hire? Is that, should that be a DNR decision, Black Hawk, City Council Supervisor, or do you go with the cheapest, if that's the way it is? Cheap doesn't always be the best.
Couple of suggestions, what we're doing right now is, gonna get a couple bids, and if these people come and, and look, and they know whether they can tackle it, they look at his, Ben's, the DNR's permit system, they have to know whether they can tackle that. Then we just kinda go with the best bidder, once we've got people that know what, what they're doing.
So who would they make this presentation to, then? Would they make that to the city council, to the DNR, or to the, I'm just trying to clear up the gray areas here.
Or a combination of all.
They've said they would come out for a, a presentation, uh, essentially, if we go down this process, if we, if we're talking about what Ben is right now, just this minimal amount of eight percent of the lake, uh, for nineteen thousand dollars, then they, you could ask them to come out and, you know, give us their little doggone pointy show on how, how it works, and then they'll have to, of course, right now, I've got a, uh, I've got a price for them, but I do not have it in writing yet.
Right.
But they will put it in writing when they know where it is, so, you know.
Well, yeah, I think we'll, we'll make the commitment that we're gonna be serious from what I'm reading from the council here, but it's gonna be important that we make a strong presentation to the supervisor, and I guess that, being on the board with the, I think it's kind of a three-pronged deal, and we need to have the Black Hawk Association there, member from the city council there, and then try to, try to put our dollars together and see what we can get put together.
Talked to Dean Stock on the phone, and he said after the fifteenth, and now it's gonna be right after that screening, and we can speak with them, and then get on their agenda. And then, then they already kinda knows what we're talking about here, but then if they agree to it, of course, then they're into their budgeting process, which is, you know, the first part of the year too.
Right.
But they can maybe make a commitment to say, yeah, we'll join this club, just like we did the veggie harvester club.
Yeah.
Well, I'll arrange that presentation. We'll need, uh, a city representative to go along, and maybe another LPA person go along, and that would present to those people.
But I think the ball still has to be in the city council, or the city of Lakeview Court, for insurance purposes, or, 'cause I don't have enough insurance. If I'm the president of the board, and we sign off on this, I don't have an attorney in my pocket.
So you're suggesting the contract would be offered to the-
To the city council.
For the public candidate, instead of a private one?
Yeah, just my first thought on the insurance is that, that insurance life's with the contractor anyway.
Yeah, right.
But-
However, if there's anything else that goes wrong, I think it, I think it should be endorsed by the city council, or the Lakeview city council.
Mm-hmm. And we may need to make this work in, in some respects, even if it's just as simple as what Jim was saying about sales tax. Somebody's gotta buy this who's tax-exempt, and it'd be the city, so, uh, you know, the, the LPA wouldn't administer it.
But what, I guess what I'm trying to say is, though, if we come to there, we got two separate groups, and they wanna give us a bid for it, and they're both, say relatively s- so it just comes down to picking one or the other, I don't want too many cooks in the kitchen, one that say, if city's gonna take it, maybe the Black Hawk thinks the other team, SAC thinks that he do the other one, you know what I'm saying? So, so it's clear-cut that, once that decision's made, we're all on board, whether it's Joe Blow or Jim fail, whatever.
And I would recuse myself from that, just, it's not right for me to comment on it if I'm not paying for it. I guess I'm not, if I'm not the one paying for the services.
No, but, but you'd be, be the-
Whoever you choose, we would have to approve.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But-
Make sure that they do the right permits. And that would be one of the things that we would have to look at, what kinda dealings they've had with different associations of, you know, with the DNRs, different places, and see how that all works out, so.
As long as they have their applicator license, they meet all of our permit requirements, and they don't have any, um, anything keeping them from operating in Iowa on past experiences, 'cause, I mean, we've, we've kept commercial fishermen from fishing in Iowa for other various reasons, breaking the law. If there's nothing standing in their way, then, then I would be willing to go along with the people that-
Okay.
That you chose.
All right.
You say like, a license like, uh, five, you know?
Category five, yeah. It's, there's quite a few people that have them.
Okay, so, say the guy living on the dock, he's got some moss or whatever algae out there-
Right.
Growing, can he just spray that himself?
No.
Okay.
Um, you cannot apply, um, herbicide to water for the state without a permit. And what we don't wanna be doing is issuing three hundred and fifty different permits-
Right.
And dealing with-
Now, that's what I was wondering.
With entry and withdrawal restrictions, and postings, and managing all of that stuff on, on that level. And that's why I'm comfortable with one concentrated effort, um, to achieve those goals.
So, um, I would make the motion that we move, make the ten thousand dollars from, that we budgeted for the tree removal, to, um, this project, if needed.
That's above what we're gonna spend on the-
Harvester.
Harvest, right, okay.
But that, those dollars, 'cause I feel that's more-
Let me those funds available for that.
Urgent, urgent importance.
DNR kicks up a few hundred?
Yeah. I, I did, I know, I talked to one applicator, um, I've had emails with another one. I'm willing to help them with any technical stuff, on mapping and, and providing some, uh, shape files for GPS units, you know, so they can, if they need help with that. But, uh, yeah, like I said, Lake Restoration made its investment in vegetation management, I spent a quarter of a million on that machine, and, and they're gonna be making, well, they're making a seven hundred thousand dollar investment in the spoil site this year, and we're looking at a multimillion dollar investment in the inlet dredging, so, we're, that's where we're gonna be putting our, our money. A good try, I guess.
You're okay with the motion?
Just, um-
Hard to ask.
Uh, just the, the notion, Dave, about those, having three partners. Do you wanna commit a solid, a, a, the ten thousand dollars, or do you wanna have a third of the project up to ten thousand dollars, or?
It's important to us.
Can we, can we wait and see what the-
SAC County does?
Well, I think we gotta lead from the front.
No, I think we, we, we gotta be the-
We gotta, we gotta-
We gotta set the tone, as far as I'm concerned.
We gotta lead from the front, yes, I think's important. Um, just make that ten thousand available to the-
Just make it available.
Okay.
Yep. Is there a sec, or a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Waltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Jim, I still will go with you to the supervisors.
Thank you, I'll, I'll arrange that.
Okay. Thank you very much, we applaud your efforts.
Yep.
Thank you. Is that it on that? I gotta maybe another guy watching.
Nice man.
She ain't playing too loud, she'll like that.
She likes it.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, we're onto the easement.
Hey, just, this, this easement with, with Kathy Bliss's sign, just, uh, you can see it more on the, on the picture, on page seventeen. And what that basically does is allow us for a more gradual turn at that north end than of, of Sunset Drive, so. It's, it's only actually a nineteen-foot triangle, but it's, uh, it will help us out quite a bit out there. Kathy signed this, we would just need the council permission to proceed.
So we'll, second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, Waltman.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
It's very nice of him to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, that helps out.
Okay, we're onto the good stuff. Bill, where'd he go?
He just left.
He just left?
He knows when to leave.
Okay, we're gonna go through the wholesale power.
That's really Bill.
Yeah, it's really Bill.
Can we do the next one?
Just go back to that one?
How about if we do the pay estimate for Black Hawk Trail, that'd be easy.
Sure. Yeah, just on that pay estimate for the trail, so that's on page twenty-seven. Just know that that pays all of the cost, construction costs of the trail, other than the three percent retainage, and the change order that we'll consider here for four thousand dollars too.
So we need a motion to pay that.
Everything's, uh, actually good, in order.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Okay, we have to consider change order number one?
Yeah, change order number one. And, these are just adjusting quantities out there. Uh, they had some additional revetment stone, and that was primarily underneath a, um, one of those culverts. They put that underneath one of those culverts for, to make sure we had a good solid base for it to sit on. Um, an additional, um, amount of, of paving, which is, that, uh, is leading to that bench pad up on top of the hill. And detectable warnings, those are those, uh, you know, the handicap accessible as it, as it's coming up to the, to the roads. That just varies depending on the width of the trail. So, anyway, those are just the change in quantities, but it's four thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars.
Is there a motion to change order?
I'll change, I'll do-
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Okay, our municipal advisor, that's just a-
Um, we, well, we gotta have a municipal advisor now with our SRF program. And I would, uh, I checked with several of them, and would recommend that we would use Piper Jaffrey, and it worked with there, and then on, on a couple change contracts, and, and there is, is good with the contract now, that's as proposed, starting on page thirty-one. Um, they, they just have a small set of, of, uh, items that they will help us with as far as, uh, maintaining compliance with our SRF. So it has everything to do with wastewater only. Okay. But, yeah, if we can-
We need a motion for-
Approve that contract.
For the council, Piper Jaffrey?
So we'll-
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Waltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
We'll just keep going to the SRF fund?
Uh, this, that'll take a little while to talk through.
Oh, God.
Back to Bill on the power.
He's not back, is he?
He is.
Oh, hell, there, I was looking over there, Bill, sorry. Okay, he's read all the stuff.
Passing out, it's not here.
That's right.
And Bill has read all the contracts.
Has about eighty-five.
Uh, you know, the cover letters on eighteen, the, the summary report starts on page nineteen. This is nowhere closer to the entire report that, that Bill has, it's massive pages long, but this is the summary. So, the intent tonight is that we'll call Marlin Verbus here shortly, and Marlin's gonna walk us through this summary and go through the different proposals. I would just ask you again, uh, that we received those seven proposals, when you read anything in, in here, they're all marked as company A, B, C, D. If you're talking about anything, please refer to them as company A, B, C, D. Again, they, each of the companies has requested confidentiality as much as possible, and so long as we can honor that, it, it's appropriate, that we can do that. Any comments, Bill, before we-
Ready to go, Scott.
Oh, crap.
It's almost one eighty o'clock, so, you might just, you need his number, Scott?
Yeah, I do. I wrote it down on a different sheet and threw it away.
It's getting exciting here, guys.
(inaudible).
Oh, man.
Marlin, hi, Scott Peterson. I think we're doing okay. We had a long discussion about lake water quality.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
How we're gonna feel.
I'm, I'm gonna put you on a speakerphone now.
Yeah, that's, that's-
All right, Marlin, still there?
Yeah, good evening, can everybody hear me all right?
Yep.
Yep.
I will try to stay close to the speakerphone, and, uh, move through this as quickly as I can. Uh, you should have in front of you a handout that's got the cover letter, and, uh, and two pages of, uh, summary of a comparative analysis, and three pages of observations and comments. I'm gonna try to focus on the, uh, the table, on the first page after the cover letter. Uh, but for the review of, some of the folks who might not have been, uh, involved in the-
That'd be a twenty-one.
Request for proposal process early, earlier on, when, in, in August, when we got the process started, I thought I'd review a little bit, just to make, make sure you know that, uh, this request for proposal was for supplemental power, about seventy-five percent of, uh, Lakeview's energy comes from, from your Western Area Power Administration Agreement. So this is for the other twenty-five percent, uh, for a contract that would start, uh, service in June first of next year. Uh, we got seven proposals, and, uh, or if I should say proposals, or responses at least, uh, from seven, uh, suppliers. And, uh, I've just labeled them A through G for a couple reasons. I wanna be as objective as possible as we, as we go through them. And also, uh, I think most or all of them have asked for confidentiality in their actual proposals, so I don't wanna divulge, uh, individual suppliers, um, to the extent possible. Um, and also to, you know, to compile the numbers down to, uh, consolidated, um, presentation as I can, I've put everything in terms of a average five-year cost, uh, cost or average cost. And, uh, let's see here. I should point out that some of the responses were not really price proposals. What we asked for were fixed price proposals, uh, for five years, um, which is what we had previously. Um, we got a variety of responses. Uh, some of them didn't include price offers at all. Um, they offered to schedule energy at a, a cost per month, or a cost per megawatt hour, and I'll talk about the individuals as we get into this a little bit. Um, that was, and specifically that was, uh, offers A and E were just offers to schedule energy without, whatever the market price is. Um, what I've done is kind of separated, or identified separately, the proposals that were fixed price proposals, fixed price for energy, versus those that, that were not. So the, the three shaded areas, the B1, C1, and G1, are the, uh, they offered fixed energy prices. There's variances in capacity prices and some other things, but the energy price was, was fixed. And, and there's, I've tried to cover the variances, uh, and the different conditions that might, might exist by breaking them out as I did. So you got B1, B2, C1, two, and three, and I'll talk about what all that means, uh, as we get into this. But the one that I highlighted in each group, uh, is kind of the upper range of the expected five-year average cost for the respective supplier. Um, so I think, best way to go through this is to kinda just walk through each proposal, uh, enough to get a sense of what's in it, and kind of my, one of my preliminary recommendations to, to start weeding these out a little bit. Um, let me grab a drink here.
I believe it was a boy.
Hey. Decap.
That'd be cool.
Uh, prior A, uh, that's one that, uh, didn't offer a price proposal, so, all, but I, I wanted to give some comparative analysis, so I, I computed the average cost for the coat-supplied portion of the energy requirements for the prior three years, and then kinda brought everything forward to present years, and then five years out, to get the cost and the average cost. So, and you'll see some of these numbers throughout. Uh, my projection for market prices, again, just based on a three-year trend and then projected out, is, uh, about twenty, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents a megawatt hour. Now, I, I know, to, to, for comparison, uh, you might wanna think in terms of cents per kilowatt hour, you just move the decimal to the left, and it translates into cents per kilowatt hour. But wholesale power is bought on a megawatt hour basis, so that's how the tables were prepared. prepared. But anyway, going through that, um, the, the two variances then for, for supplier A were that, uh, they didn't offer any capacity prices at all, but, uh, the two prices I used for the range were, uh, what I know to be the bilateral purchase price offered for supplier B, which is, um, uh, the only one that's solidly fixed price for the first year. I used the first-year price, uh, as a bilateral trade price. That's in column A1. And A2, I used what I know to be the clearing price in the MISO capacity auction from last year. And that's, I mean, that can vary anywhere, as it has. It was actually a little higher last year than the prior year. And it, I won't go into the details of how that auction works, but if you can imagine a supply and offer curve where the offer curve looks like a hockey stick that shoots up at the end, well, the clearing price can be anywhere on that hockey stick. But that's, it's been low, it's been, it's been sort of below that hockey stick turn up, so, um, but that's, that's where it fell out last year. So that's kind of a range where capacity prices might be if we were to just kind of go on, go on our own. And, uh, so in, in either way, we're, we're talking like a million dollar a year average for overall cost. Of course, that, about seventy-five percent of that is the WAPA and the MISO and Mid-American Transmission, uh, will continue to be the bulk of the, of your cost. Um, since that was not a fixed price, again, I included it for comparison purposes, but I'm kind of ruling it out, at least at this point, as, uh, you know, something that, uh, that we wanna, you know, give further consideration to. It's too far from, too far removed from the fixed price that we were looking for. Uh, and, and let's kind of cover all of the non-fixed price offers first. So let's jump to D. Um, that one actually had, in one place on their proposal, they called it a fixed price. They said it's a fixed price proposal, but later they call it indicative prices or indicative offers or notional prices. And, uh, they refer to it as indicative or notional more than they did fixed price. Uh, and just kind of from what we know about that supplier, I, 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 I would call it a non-fixed price proposal. Very likely to, to vary at, at whatever the, their actual costs are. And the other thing that troubles me a little bit about this is they did not break out capacity and energy. Uh, they said it's, it's all combined and all in type of offer. But without knowing what they assumed about capacity costs, uh, makes it hard to accept as a, the true, true fixed price offer. Uh, so I've kind of put them in the no further consideration at this time, uh, category, at least for now. Um, I think as we get into this, we'll see that there are other non-fixed proposals that are better, so, uh, so that's why I feel confident we can kind of set those two aside for the time being. So that was A and D. Supplier E is off, is similar to supplier A in that they just offered to schedule energy at a, in their case, a monthly price. So the energy price that I put in there is my own calculation. Same with capacity, same assumptions as I did for A. And it, and their costs, their scheduling costs are, are higher, so there's no reason to, I don't think, to give any further consideration to, to them. Then supplier F, um, it's, they indicate themselves that it's fixed, a fixed price for the first seven months, which is the remainder of the year 2016, and then estimated thereafter, uh, through 2020, and then no price after that because their, their current wholesale, um, supplier price is, uh, good through 2020. But as we look in more detail at their offer, uh, the description of their supply, they indicate that sixty percent of their purchased power, uh, is under a, a fixed price contract, fixed price agreement, and the other forty percent is, is market price. And that, you know, that gives more credibility, I think, to that offer, uh, uh, than a truly, you know, full market price type offer. And, and, and the energy price, they quote, looks, you know, as, as you can see in the, if you look across column two, or row two of all the, you know, the non-fixed offers, they're at twenty-eight, forty-four, and, and my estimate of, of weighted, uh, average cost at, right at, uh, Lakeview is twenty-eight, thirty-five, so it's like right in that same range. And yet they say sixty percent of that is fixed. Uh, it raises my eyebrows a little bit, or well, maybe more than a little bit, because they specifically tell us, uh, what their, uh, contract price is through 2020. And I, I don't wanna say that in case we're, you know, would violate a confidentiality agree, uh, requirement, but it's higher than, than the number they put in, in the table under F, oh-two. Uh, and again, the, uh, average cost of market energy, uh, is, is, is right at about this price. So I, I don't know how you average, uh, two numbers that are at or above, you know, this price and then come up with this price. Um, so we would, um, as we get into this, uh, I guess what I would, what I would, uh, you know, at a minimum, we would need to ask, ask some questions as, as to what's really contained in, in their prices and their offers and, uh, so forth. But I would not rule that out for, for tonight's purposes. I would say they're in the running and, and, and worthy of further consideration. That's all of the non-fixed price or semi-non-fixed price proposals. So now we'll go back to the shaded, uh, prices, the ones that are indicated to be fixed energy prices, starting with B. Um, theirs is a fixed energy price through, um, yeah, for the full five years. The, uh, capacity price is fixed for the first year, but as you may remember from the, you know, discussion we had about what's going on with the capacity market in MISO, we don't, we don't know what, uh, the requirements are gonna be in terms of whether it's gonna be an annual requirement or a seasonal requirement after the first year or somewhere. I mean, there's no fixed deadline on when they redesign the market, but we expect it's gonna be sometime in the next couple of years. And we kind of wrote out the RFP that way, saying that, you know, we, we know it's gonna be difficult to come up with fixed price, price proposal after the first year. So they didn't. They just says, well, um, they would, they would suggest that Lakeview, uh, purchased their energy through the MISO, um, auction, uh, which is an option, but it's, it's, uh, you know, it's unpredictable what that clearing price is gonna be. But to give some sense of what, what the results might be, I, I put in the first year, uh, I, I assume in, in B1 that we could get that first-year price every year, um, uh, under a fixed price basis, because they didn't actually say they wouldn't offer it as each year approaches. They just didn't wanna make a firm commitment now. Uh, so, so there is potential for that fixed price, uh, to continue, and I don't think, you know, my sense is that it's not gonna go up. It may, may be fairly flat. Uh, so that's one, that's B1. B2 just says we would pay their offer price for the first year, and after that, we would average that with what we know to be the most recent, uh, auction clearing prices and come up with a different set of numbers. So then the bottom line, um, the average cost would be the forty-five oh-nine and one, um, under the, under the assumption of, of bilateral trades, or forty-two sixty-three if we average bilateral with, uh, the most recent clearing price. So it's in that range. Okay, we'll move to C1, C2, and C, C3. Um, that's, that's indicated to be fixed price, um, for the full five years, capacity and energy. Um, but there are some real uncertainties about what the cost of transmission would be, because what they propose to do is actually serve Lakeview from sort of across the border in a different regional transmission organization. Lakeview, as you probably know, is, is part of MISO, which is now a mid-continent independent system operator and part of that market. Uh, but you're not far from folks in what is now, what used to be, um, like the WAPA area and, 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 uh, you know, a different balancing authority of the north. That's now part of a new RTO as of October one, just a little over a month ago, is now part of the Southwest Power Pool, which is kind of a, it's another RTO, just like MISO, except they operate in a different group of states. Uh, and have, have, uh, when Western Area Power Administration joined them, then pretty much everybody that is affiliated in that, uh, adjacent balance, uh, adjacent balancing authorities kind of had to join. Uh, so they did. And, uh, so they would propose to actually serve it from that side. Well, what that means is you, you, you would have to pay transmission on both sides, uh, the SPP side and the, uh, the MISO side. What we don't know is how much transmission you'd have to pay for. Uh, we, we've used their estimates for the SPP side, and there's some variance in that that they're still working out. On the MISO side, it depends on a couple of things. Um, the two systems at the sixty-nine KV level are not actually connected at this point. They're separated by an open switch, and there's been some discussion and debate about whether that switch could be closed. Um, if they don't close it, that's where you get the forty-six eighty, forty-six eighty-two or four, you know, four-point-six-eight cents per kilowatt hour, uh, because you'd still pay both the MISO network charge and the Mid-American direct assignment charge for using that sixty-nine KV line. Uh, if they closed that switch and did nothing else, I guess you'd jump over to, well, it's not certain, but very likely, uh, you could jump over to that forty, forty-six, forty-three. But more than likely, if you, if you close that, you know, if that switch is closed, the Mid-American would consider that to be networked, uh, transmission, and they would include it in the rate base for, that all their transmission assets, and you'd pay the MISO network rate, which would be the forty, which would compute out to be, uh, you know, when you average it in, it'd be the forty-four, forty-five. So, you know, I don't know how that would play out. Nobody does. My sense is that what could happen is you'd, it, nothing would happen initially. You'd pay the both rates on the Mi, on the S, on the, on the MISO side, and then eventually you might get it down to the, uh, to where you're only paying the, the network charge and not the direct assignment charge, again, if that sixty-nine KV is brought into the, the overall transmission system and, and rate base. So that's, that's the uncertainty there. I mean, the, the prices are competitive, they're comparable, I should say, at least with, with B. Um, so there's not a great cost savings in any case, and especially if under B, if we can kind of move that five-year average towards the right, towards that forty-two sixty-three, then that starts to look like a better alternative between those two. And, and that leaves, uh, offer or supplier G, G1, G2, the uncertainty, they, they would also propose to serve it by, by, that's called pseudo-tying. Serve it by, by, you know, from the SPP side, they would put, they would pseudo-tie, they call it pseudo-tie because that load, for purposes of balancing energy on an hourly basis among the balancing authorities, would be included in the SPP side for balancing. So that's what they propose to do. G and would do the same thing as C there. The uncertainty, the reason there's a G1 and G2 is that they, they, G1 represents what's, what they say are their fixed rates for Lakeview, but they say that, um, uh, certain discounts are likely to apply. They just don't know exactly what they are. They quoted their best estimate of what the discounts would be, and they taper off year to year until last year, there are, there are no discounts. So, you know, that's the variable part. So I, so column G1 is without discounts and column G2 is, uh, with the discounts that they quoted. But, but in both cases, it puts them above, uh, either B1 or C1. So that's, that's really a quick run-through of a fair amount of number crunching, uh, to, to get to that point. Uh, I guess I'll stop here and ask if there's any questions about what I just said.
Will you repeat all that?
(laughing).
So this is all fu...
It's on, it's on the table.
This is all based on five-year plan?
Yeah, I mean, I've got the individual year by year. It just, it got, to try to compile that, and, and I gave it to Bill, but it turned into several pages of data. Uh, but, uh, but this is, and when I say average, it's, it's not an average of five number, uh, you know, the, the forty-five oh-nine, for example, is not an average of five numbers. It's the actual total cost for five years divided by the total co-supplied energy for five years.
So in a nutshell of everything here, B1 looks like our best option?
In terms of, in, in most respects, it is. Um, in terms of, uh, and, and I think, I think at this point I can interject that, uh, that is your incumbent supplier. Um, so, um, it, it adds a, certainly it adds a element of simplicity because all of the telemetering and, and, uh, processes are, are in place. But, you know, as I, as I talked through it, I didn't wanna rule out, you know, the partially fixed offer under F, 'cause there is, uh, there is a price differential that's, uh, significant. Uh, but, I mean, there's also, uh, there's some non-tangibles there, too. I mean, your incumbent supplier's been a, kind of a partner in, 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 uh, you know, transmission service and so forth. So I, I really kind of wanna leave that on the table that, you know, um, that, you know, tho, those are the conditions. There is a price differential, but there are some, some advantages to B1 or B in general, um, that are somewhat intangible.
So what, what, if we were to, like, like, like you said, uh, kick a few amount off around this first round, would they, the ones that would be left, would they come back with a little more hard numbers for us?
That's what we would, that's what we would hope for, yeah. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm getting particularly looking at F. Um, uh, we have a lot of questions for them.
Yeah.
If we were, if we were to go that route, you know, before we made a firm recommendation just based on price, 'cause there, there are some things that, frankly, there are gaps in, in their proposal. In many respects, it's a strong proposal, but there are some serious gaps, and then there's some, uh, I, I've worked with the other, the other suppliers in one way or another. I've never worked for that particular one, but I've worked for one of their, one of their members, so I have some insight from that side, and that helps me, you know, that flags some things that I wanna get clear, uh, if we were to pursue that. But, uh, so that's, as, as we get to the, you know, actual recommendations, that's kind of where I left it. I said, well, you know, we could, we could make an administrative decision and say, you know, you gotta have real good reason to sort of boot out an incumbent. Uh, but price might be enough of a reason, but we don't really know that price differential until we ask some questions. So option B is, I put on the last table, the, uh, last page there, um, or page two here.
So how many would the, how many would we keep on the table just to be for a competitive advantage, I guess?
Oh, uh... I was thinking in terms of two, I guess if we wanted to put a, you know, if we wanted to say what, what's the, the, if we were gonna go to a third one, which one would it be? Uh, could look at it that way. It wouldn't be E. I would doublehash that one out. Um...
Or A, it sounds like.
What's that?
We probably wouldn't want A, right?
Probably hash out A. Twenty-five percent of non-fixed market energy doesn't look very attractive. Um, there's enough complexities and, well, I would rule out G just on the basis of price, even with their discounts. Um, the o, the only caveat there is their, their capacity offer was a little convoluted, and I, I was on the phone with them twice to make sure I understood it, and I believe I did. Still came out high. If we wanna go a third round with them, but trying to serve it from the other side of the border, uh, gets to be problematic. And then with C, there's no amount of negotiation we can do between now and when we have to make some firm decisions that is gonna, that is gonna solve that C1 versus C2 versus C3. We wouldn't know that for months or years.
Good.
So check that one, so...
I'm inclined to take out C and G, uh, but that still leaves D. That's reasonable. I mean, we know who they are. You, the...
B, D, and F.
Uh, yeah, B, D, and F. The, uh, you know, I, I, again, I'm trying to maintain confidentiality here without being too secretive. If you look through your packet, you know that the last page is the code, code table, so you know who all these guys are. But I wanna keep that confidential for purposes of discussion in case we're being observed or recorded. But yeah, I could, uh, easily see going back and getting more clarity from, from D and, and F, and, and also B, 'cause I think the question I would have for them is, yeah, you didn't quote a firm price for future years, but, you know, is it likely that you would as, as the year's approached? So there is open questions for, for those three.
What do you see being the, uh, timeline to have to, uh, make a firm decision?
Yeah, the, um, the, uh, RFP asked for ninety days from the time that, uh, uh, the offers were received, and we, I didn't see any exceptions, uh, from B, so it's one of my questions for them is, will they honor that? That would, that would put it to, to January fourteenth. And that, and we would want, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna go right up against that deadline, but, uh, but that, that is kind of the hard stop. Um, and the other reason is that registrations for capacity and so forth start in February. Uh, and the other reason is that registrations for capacity and so forth start in February. So, so we real, I would say, you know, early January is, is kind of the hard stop on that. Uh, I'm not sure if D, if, hang on just a second, I'll see if D gave us another date. Hang on a second.
I think it's, two that you've got.
Y'all fast second shuffle papers here. I, flipping through here, I don't see where they gave us an alternate date. So without an alternate date, I'm gonna say it's also early January. Hard to look.
That was a lead.
Maybe Bill's got his air, his, there.
I couldn't see anything. How about? Would you want a separate council meeting for that or?
We'll have a couple of meetings between then.
When's your next council meeting, the seventh? Would you have an own before then?
We might, we might. Yeah, we're gonna talk about this issue.
That would help.
Um, so are, what we're looking at here is, is basically whittling it down to three. So it would be B, D and F?
Yep.
And then, forgive you a couple of weeks, Marlon, to answer, uh, get, get some of the questions answered, is that?
Yeah, I think, um, I think that's doable. I have, uh, well, your next meeting is the seventh, so, uh-
Next meeting's the seventh, we might have a special on the thirtieth, but-
Oh, I got a problem with that. Uh, I'm gonna be out of the country from, uh, coming Saturday through, uh, December first. So what I had in mind was to get, uh, uh, specific questions lined up within the next couple of days and, and schedule phone calls, uh, with, uh, with whoever we narrowed this list down to prior to that and then, and then give them a, you know, get what we can over the phone and then give them a couple of weeks to-
Sure.
-give us more-
That's fine, you know.
-thought answers, I guess, the way I look at it.
Because if we can be doing something on December seventh, I think that's-
That's, that was, as I talked to Bill this afternoon, I, uh, I thought that would, would work.
Just go with the seventh then, Marlon?
Yeah, I think so. Well, we'll know a lot more then than we do now, uh, so on these, on the open questions. So that would be my goal, to get, get as much answered by phone this week and give them time to follow up with written responses, uh, say by the first. And then I would have the rest of that week to review and then present to council on the seventh.
So when, when you get, a lot of your questions answered, Marlon, is, will it still be that a lot of these prices are still gonna be just market prices though and you're not gonna know what they're gonna be in subsequent years?
Only, only for, uh, well, basically, yeah. Uh, you know, D is, um, not only the, the prices, but I mean, you know, Bill and I have seen instances where, uh, joint action agencies will, I, I don't know, I don't know exactly what transpires, but they'll come up with a new charge and they'll usually blame it on MISO. And they'll give it a name and it'll show up on your bill and you don't quite know what it's for or where it came from. Um, that's, that's my concern. You know, that feel is, is that's, that's what I worry about. But, but the prices themselves. Uh, with, with D, we can sort of pin them down and say, "Look, you, you said it both ways in your, in your letter. You said it's fixed price, but then you said it was indicative." And maybe what they're saying is, once the agreement is signed between now and early January, they'll fix it. But what they quoted as now isn't necessarily fixed. So, and maybe that's what they mean, that, that it will be fixed, but not necessarily at, at the indicative prices they, they gave us now. So I, I don't know what they mean, we just need to ask. But, but there's, you know, they all have some caveats. We've seen that before. They say, "Well, governmental, uh, requirements or, uh, well, you know, even the Clean Power Act, uh, Clean Power Plan, you know, could, could be inferred to be in, uh, uh, part of, uh, some of these proposals." And so, I, depends how those are interpreted and enforced. We've never seen it happen. We've never seen the government action clause invoked. That's not to say it couldn't be. Um, I don't quite know how I answer that. I, I, that's why I really want to see, especially F, where the, where the price has just seemed kind of unbelievably low, see really how, what the, see if we can get the language of the, of their supply contract so we have more confidence that they are fixed.
Okay.
Sound like a plan.
Very good, yeah. So it looks like we're gonna do some, you're gonna do some work on, uh, on B, D and F yet and we'll revisit it probably on the seventh.
I think that's a reasonable conclusion, yeah.
Sounds great. Any other, any other questions?
If you think of something, uh, you know, route it through Bill and he'll get it to me and we'll, we'll be working on this together.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you much.
All right, thanks, Marlon.
Thank you.
There we go.
What happened to the olden days?
Your contract got used to be two pages with IPAs.
Didn't they just put what the price of kilowatt was?
What the demand was, the kilowatts and that was it.
My God.
And it was twenty-year contract.
Yeah. Just dive into it, boys, just dive into it.
Holy cow.
This makes your head swim, I just, I still don't know why it can't be just kilowatt.
Why would we go for all this? Is it lawyers and stuff? You're paying MISO now, before we never had MISO. It was just us and the supplier. But they said it's good for us.
And they smiled. Yeah.
Feel good?
Yeah. Bend over.
That's why Bill's hair's turning gray.
The first year raised our costs ten thousand a month.
It was good for you.
Yep, because we don't know what we're doing. That's what Furt told us.
Did we have, did we still have to give that down payment on that yet or?
Do we have a, uh, deposit on file business?
How much was that again?
For MISO?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
They wanted some financial report though, wasn't it?
I gave it to them today and they want a little bit more now. Yeah, we got twenty thousand dollars.
Always ask for a little more.
Yep.
The temperature's finally coming down a little bit.
I turned it off. Yeah, I got-
It was dying, man.
A lot of people raised the temperature.
Oh, it was, we said eighty-five. It's way too hot.
When's the last time we did that rate study with NMPP, wasn't that?
Oh, God, at least four years ago with those guys.
Yeah, it's been four years ago. We, we did a, a rate study four years ago, reevaluated three years ago, then we've done nothing for the past two years. Um, I want to walk through with this page twenty-six with you. And this just shows revenue and expenditures over the past six, seven years. And really, we can just, we'll just start at the bottom where it, where it's saying plus or minus for first three years has always ran a little bit in, in the hole. Then we implement-
Well, twenty-six, Terry. I'll just start.
And we implemented, uh, those rate increases and we got to where we were at least covering costs then and actually built a little bit of a, of a fund balance over the next few years. But what's really happening right now is that we basically generate enough revenue to cover costs and then whenever we do a larger project, it goes in the hole. So we did a large project the past couple of years, or last year, and then we're budgeted for, for a little project this year, puts us in the hole. So, um, you know, my suggestion to the council is we need to do a rate study again. Um, we've done, we've done it before where we would look at rates and just do an in-house rate adjustment. Last time we did this, we used NMPP and, uh, that's the proposal in the packet is to use NMPP again. And, you know, that cost on that was forty-three hundred dollars or something like that. Forty-five, sixty on their cost to do the study. I guess I'd, we need to evaluate, uh, revenues in the electric utility. It's just a question of whether you want to do it in-house or look at somebody to do it.
Terry, you had everything you need, you want it in-house?
Uh, not the technical side of things.
One of the biggest things they're gonna need to know is what we're gonna do with our wholesale supplier. That's one of the biggest numbers they need. So for them to do their job, they need to know that number before they're done, yes.
And we want to know that until after every year, first year.
Well, yeah, the seventh of December, we, we talked to Marlon again, he'll pretty much know. You never know till they, it's all over, but it's life, I guess.
If we do it in-house and they do it, have we ever done that before? Just see who's better at doing it, them or us? You just know we need more money.
They're, they're better at it than we are, there's no denying that.
It goes, it goes to selling to public too, I mean.
Yeah, they're better if somebody else did it.
If we're gonna raise rates, who'll raise the rates? Well, that's us five, you know? What do you guys know about raising rates? Where if you haven't studied done, you haven't done professionally, this is where we're at, this is where we gotta be, this is what we gotta do. And like I said, it's-
I'm more comfortable with that. In a hundred years, it won't make any difference.
Well, it won't be. Why do who?
He said what?
Jerry will still be here. The rest of us will.
Maybe Eric.
He'll be with us. He'll be here with his water.
Well, it's like all left from right, that's all I'm worried about.
So I would, I would make a motion that we use them to do the study.
NMPP. Your second?
I'll say.
Roll call.
Okay, Walkman?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Want to get that started? And just, uh, as, so long as we're talking rates, just, this will be happening here near term too, will be sewer rates again. We have a, a list of proposed increases for the subsequent years for the, for the sewer rates really already panned out, so, um, that, that'll come up, I don't know if it'll be in the next meeting, but it'll be shortly thereafter.
You need to get them on the list.
We're gonna have to get it high enough to pay for yours.
Yeah. And you don't have face sewer rates.
Right yet.
Okay, the SRF-
It's not going in the lake.
Probably why they've got bacteria in that. It's ridiculous.
I want to take, just talk about this SRF project a little bit that we, we have this sponsored project, this, these funds available from, from the SRF project. Um, again, we get ten percent of the money that we would take out in this loan for the sewer tru- sewer treatment plant project and we get ten percent of that money to go towards some sort of a, a, uh, water, uh, kind of a green infrastructure project for a non-point, non-point source contributor. So, um, this is taking care of water runoff off of, off of some land. So, uh, working with the, the LPA and the city, we're looking at, uh, a project to do, we started out thinking it'd be another big rain garden, bioretention swell. And it'd be out in the ditches at Dixieland with the biggest one being on the north side of the entrance to Dixieland. That just gets inundated with, with water down there. Why, it comes, uh, flowing down there like crazy and in the worst circumstances, when you, when you get tens of inches of rain, it has overflowed the road. So, uh, the idea was this large, uh, bioretention cell down there, but as we start to look at that more, because it gets so much rain, uh, and all of this water flowing through there, that you really gotta start working your way back upstream then to be able to handle water on the upper edge of that. Because you think about all that water that comes down past Dixieland, a lot of that comes off the parking lot in the building at Evapco. You know, and that's, and, and everything else associated with that. So when you go up to Evapco, that's clear at the top of this area that drains down there and that's why we would look at that area to, uh, change the way that water is held up there. Okay, so they have that berm up there and it works tremendously, stops water just like it's supposed to. But water only gets to be a few inches high in, in their, behind that berm before it goes into what is now a six-inch hole into the, into their, uh, into their tile and it quickly outflows and there is very little retention there. So the idea behind this is to say, "Let's, let's take this from a storage area that's always dry and let's change it into something that has at least a little bit of, of permanent water there." So that's some of what the pictures look like, like on page thirty-five or thirty-seven, that's just a couple of different options about changing that into a, uh, an area that, that has some water there all the time so that you're getting some, some additional amount of water treatment by, by growing the, uh, the grasses and vegetation, that type of stuff, you get more water treatment. But then it also restricts the flow out of, out of that. That is the water retention area then. Instead of having a, uh, six-inch hole there, several inches above the ground, you have a one and a half or a two-inch hole that's, you know, a few feet up. And it, again, it, it helps with, with water retention in that area and, and gets some water to get into the ground, but it, it slows the way the water comes down, eventually ending up down there towards Dixieland where we would still plan to put in this large bioretention cell or this, uh, this big rain garden. So we were out to talk with, with Evapco and they're on board with this notion. They would, they would like to participate somehow. Um, we presented this to the LPA, the LPA is on board with, with this idea too and they actually have five thousand dollars that was a corporate donation that is to be spent on a, uh, rain garden project. And they would love to just, just dovetail that into this, uh, partner, uh, program. So, um, we'd like to keep plugging away at this, this project to be funded by some LPA, about forty-five thousand of this, this, uh, sponsored project money, but it likely ends up costing more than that. So there's a new urban water quality initiative grant that's out there and we want to be applying for that funds. And, uh, basically, when you get down to where we're at today, we need to, uh, we will need to hire an engineer in order to proceed with some of this stuff.
So what's the, the downhill, maybe like to Tim Laney or to the farm fields, uh, going across the road?
You know, if you look at page thirty-four, that, if you could follow the map, this shows where everything drains. So, you know, if you're up there at Evapco, it's, uh, saying that there's twenty-five acres up there at Evapco that, that keeps draining down there and you kind of follow the flow lines because as soon as it gets down to the ditch, of course, it, it, uh, all goes under that, the culvert that's kind of right there, oh, kind of close to the Evapco sign is where that culvert is, it goes underneath the road. So as far as any impacts on, on Laney's and whatnot, not much, it, because-
It should slow the flow.
Everything just gets slowed down. And so they're looking at, at the Evapco project, they're also looking south of the, of the, of the highway there. There are some terraces there already, but they'd be looking at other, at implementing other practices there with that farmer then too. So TJ and, and his group are working then the, the ag side of things.
Yep. That's a magnificent progress to do with.
Anyway, we need to, we need to have an engineer on board to do a little bit of work on this. I know everybody loves us, but this is an opportunity then for us to-
I know, I could do it without having an engineer there.
Right. I'm just saying, Gus, we're using a bunch of government money, we, we really don't have a whole lot of choice in this matter.
So we need a motion to hire Bolton Inc.?
Well, I'd like- Well, I'd like, Bolton and Mink is the firm that, that Storm Lake used to, to do their big green infrastructure plan up there. And, you know, that would be a recommendation, is that we would talk with them and, and make sure that they're the firm that, that we want. But I wanna be real consistent with what Storm Lake is doing. We, they have blazed a lot of trails up there that, that we can ride right behind them on. And Bolton and Mink can help us out on that stuff.
So you call them and get a proposal from them?
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll certainly get a proposal from them, but.
And then we'll make a decision on it?
Hey, my, yeah, and my real question is, do you wanna see one, more than one proposal? But, or can we just, can you use Bolton and Mink?
I don't know if this guy knows what he's, you think he knows what he's doing, like? Probably, uh, he might be an escalator dog.
Yeah, and, and it will be, but the project is relatively small. You know, it will be a few thousand dollars, should be under ten thousand dollars, I think.
Oh.
Oh.
The engineering fee?
The engineering fees, yes.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let's leave it opened a little bit, let's find out the price, bring back the price, and then we'll ask for a second, second opinion, or a second bid, if it's, we think it's too out.
Sure. Will do.
Move forward and.
Let him think that he's bidding against somebody.
I need a proposal from him, that's true.
Yeah, so, we'll determine whether that proposal will be accepted or not. Do you need a proposal or less, or what do you need? Do you need something?
Do I need something?
No.
Nope, we'll.
That's the first time.
I mean, is it?
Budget timeline?
Yeah, budget timeline.
That's always fun.
Man, it's gonna be about budget time, where's that, thirty-nine, thirty-nine? I, I just wanna talk through the process with, with the council again. This timeline outlines the, uh, a similar process to what we've done before. We have department heads do their inventory, come up with a needs assessment, eh, to be the first portion of our budget work. And then what that amounts to is, we, we do a lot of our capital planning first, and then, uh, work the remainder of the budget in around the, around the capital planning. Um, you know, do you like that process, or you wanna look at doing some, some, a different process?
It's worked in the past.
Do you care?
Just gotta do it.
And, so a couple of things, uh, for you, would, would you like to have a city council goal setting session again? We've, we have done that here for the past several years, more of an informal meeting. Um, and this would be proposed to be on the second Monday of, of January, which would be the eleventh. Do you, do you see value in that, or?
I don't know, I've never been to one.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, basically what it does is, is you pick out ideas and you discuss them, and see if you wanna, you know, I don't have a problem with that at all, I, I don't know what you guys say, but I think it's always more of a fact fight than, more than anything else.
We, I, we've had some good things come out of that, and a couple of years ago, the campground ideas came out of that. And, and changed priorities really, about the way we were going, so. Um, and, and then my other question to you deals with January eighteenth. I'd like to take vacation and go down to Florida for a week. And the flights that we're looking at fly out on Monday and Friday, so we would like to fly out on that eighteenth. And can we work scheduling to either change date of that meeting, or?
Are you gonna take us along or what?
Probably not.
Probably not, yeah.
Yeah, we're leaving on Wednesday.
Which day would you want?
We're leaving on Wednesday.
What time does Gray Hall leave? I can't see why we couldn't change it.
Yeah, Avon. Well, and there would be, you know, if you wanna do the goal setting, we would do that on the eleventh, and then, you know, maybe a Wednesday or Thursday after that. But yeah, if we can work around that, I'd appreciate that, and we'll get something set up then.
We can do that.
So whatever day works for you, we come back.
Well, not necessarily, we'll have to see, and see, uh, see what works for everybody, now Tammy has some Thursday night obligations.
I'm not moving to Texas.
Whitey, you're, you're back around now?
I'm back around, but I'll, but it'll be, it'll, it'll, maybe. Whole thing, I'm gonna be gone the fifteenth of February though, I'm gonna be gone that week.
Okay.
So.
With any luck, you know, assuming everything comes together fine on the budget, that, the fifteenth of, of February would be just to, uh, re, give final review on it, and make sure that everything's okay, and we'll set the, set the public hearing date.
Okay, all right, good, now.
Make good luck.
Great, thank you. Um, couple of other things, just that we, uh, received a, a resignation today from the park board and the Planning and Zoning Commission for Tammy Moller.
Oh.
Yep, we, we.
Way to go.
Now we need to find a, a park board member and planning and zoning member, uh, which we will start to work on. Um, the, uh, Rika Bowman and, and her estate had, are making some contributions to the park. And a couple of pieces of the equipment that would go down there. And one of them is a, a little climbing tunnel for some, real small, small aged kids, and we've, uh.
Look at me for.
You're small.
Tiny.
Anyway, that, we, that the city would go ahead and purchase those, and, and the Bowman family then turns around and reimburses us for it. So we've been processing the purchase on those.
And I think the other thing goes on by the beach.
At the beach, will be one of those diggers.
Yeah.
That go down there in the sand.
Just gotta get it kinda in the right place, cause that's what she does.
Gus will be down there all the time running that.
There you go.
You can put them both down there.
Jesseville.
Jesus, permanent.
Okay, Whitey.
How we doing on our twenty-five sign?
Pardon me?
How about our sign, we're gonna get that over and get that fixed, or?
He can come here and do it.
He's done farming now.
He oughta be done farming, so, well.
Get some gas on him, see what happens.
We'll get some, yeah. Um, I'm, I'm gonna get a different desk up in my office. Aaron was so, uh, good enough to, Aaron's getting a different desk, I'm getting her old one.
Ah, well, thank you, Aaron, appreciate it.
So yes, that's, uh, we do appreciate that.
Scott doesn't really need one, if you open the doors, they fall on the floor.
New chair, new desk.
Yeah, ain't that something?
Life's good.
Life is good.
The wisdom you'll inherit will be good.
Uh, yes, I'm thinking, all of that knowledge will permeate out of the desk.
I'll give us old books, too.
There you go.
Uh, we heard about our trucks for the, uh, our pickup trucks for the electric and public works guys. Remember, we ordered those almost like a year ago? And, uh, they're still not built, and they're, they are supposed to be built, uh, in late January now. And the salesman actually said today, he said, uh, yeah, I can understand you guys want to cancel those orders, they'd be fine, you go ahead and cancel them. I would suggest we're gonna hold out one more time, and if things really are built in January, we'll be fine. Otherwise, yeah, we might be looking to, uh, rebid those again and get something different. My last issue for you today is our.
Was that a contract that they gave you for a price?
Yeah, I mean, it, no, it's a bid, it's a, you know, they bid the spec. So, you know, they gotta meet, they gotta meet the spec on it, and, uh, at that, at the agreed upon price. So, the only thing that's happened so far is, we originally built, bid a fifteen, and now we'll be getting a sixteen at the, at the same price. And that's not, not bad, but they've put us off to, and this is, I think, the third time now that they've put us off on construction.
What's, what's happening? That's cause we get long box, single cab, right?
Yeah, long box, single cab, I mean, there are not too many of those built anymore, you know? Plus, we have a custom tow package on it that was causing some delay. But yeah, I guess they only go into production of long box, single cab trucks every, so often anymore.
Wow. I can't believe that. Sorry, I'm gonna just. Did I go on somebody's lot somewhere?
You could, but you, boy, you sure don't wanna. We're not gonna give up that, uh, municipal discount, so you have to see if we still get that or not.
Well, I mean, I guess we've got this, this long.
Yep. Uh, my last issue is the update of our personnel policy manual. That we've been working on this now for several months, and we're to the stage where we have a draft of, of the policy manual, working on it with, with Rick Hunsker from Region Twelve. So what he did was took our existing personnel policy manual, and we asked him to review everything, make sure that it was still appropriate, and then that we knew that there's a lot of additions that needed to be made just to, uh, uh, make sure that everything stays up to date with the legal requirements. So, here we have our up-to-date draft on, on the personnel policy manual. As, as you look at it, you'll see a whole bunch of stuff in yellow, that is stuff that, that has been added. And then you'll see more stuff in blue, some, not nearly as much, but some stuff in blue. And those are changes then that our committee made as they're review, reviewing the first draft. So the committee was the mayor, and Gus, and Whitey, and Aaron, and me. And we met with, with Rick and went through that, and, uh, this is where we, we are for this draft. So, um, what do you think about the idea of just having a special city council meeting to start review of that? And the timing, I think, is good now, because we'll be in a, in a period now where there's three weeks between the next city council meeting. So if, if we could either meet next Monday or the Monday after that, the twenty-third or the thirtieth, and we can just start to, to review this, uh, personnel policy.
Seven seconds, Jerry.
Works for me.
Yep.
So if we were to say the thirtieth for a special city council meeting?
Is there anything else we wanna review at that time? I'm talking, what's, when's the other special meeting?
Full, well, then the, we'll just, well, for the, the electric, we'll do that during our regular meeting.
Oh, okay.
Plan on, the other one that we didn't even discuss yet would be to plan on that, uh, the annual fire department meeting, which oftentimes is the second Monday of December.
So the thirtieth?
The thirtieth work for folks?
Yep, let's get it done.
Here, oh, this is exciting.
It wasn't the first time.
You're right, it didn't get any worse than that.
I can see it.
Yeah, I could hardly sleep after I got through all this stuff. It was, you know, riveting.
That all you got?
That is all I got.
Most you do a germ? Second?
I'll second.
Makes up for some of those.